Yes.
You did your best?
I um have in the um local business have a contact list. And I walked in the first day and everything was rusty on their trig.
Okay.
I saw you at dinner.
And I've never fought so hard for a seat.
So good.
And you know what? Sorry.
I totally failed the alternative.
I saw you put your coat back down.
I tried, I just could not.
I what? It's okay.
Yeah, and and the teacher really tried too. I mean, we just could not.
Well, now you have to pass as a two degree.
Oh, Lord.
So and so there are people like me who that's our entire job is to get you through whatever that class issue can't be.
I don't know if you know Mr. Babbitt.
Uh-uh.
I don't. In any case, I mean, he he really, he tried to meet where me where I was at and he tried to, you know, get me. I just, we couldn't make it where it is.
And now we have Khan Academy and we have, I mean, we have so many other strategies to get people through, but nope, it's a thing.
Yeah, no, that would have been the.
But it's like, dude, don't send me. I don't even know you. Why are you sending me a shot? I've got your kid for like ten minutes. Another one yelling at me about, a teacher yelling at me about.
Just like. You got somewhere better to be?
He doesn't like that.
I don't, I don't, I discovered that I don't think I could be anywhere but Meskegan because Meskegan's culture is such. There's a rubber on the edges all the way around. So if someone yells at me and I yell back.
Or you could invite me there.
Otherwise.
Actually, invite Molly.
I know. Everyone wants that.
Today. So I would like to call the Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order. Would you please stand and say the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will call the rule. Ms. Atchison?
Here.
Mr. Gross?
Here.
Ms. Nixon?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Race?
Here.
Mayor Hall is absent, hopefully soaking in lots of sun and maybe watching us on YouTube. I would entertain a motion to excuse Mayor Hall.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Mayor Hall is excused and the mayor pro ton is here. At this time, we will entertain public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Any citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you would like a response, please state your name and address for the record.
Well, I'm just happy to be here, Donna from eighteen North Grant and the library at one oh seven North Main. There's just so many wonderful things happening at the library. Of course, we're working as a community to do this launch this summer, a community launch for summer celebrations and there's just so many great things. And Sue Wolf from Engedi called me and said, you know, we want to do, we want to, last year they did Rufus the Doofus and they paid for him. It's like three hundred and fifty dollars. And so this year they're getting a puppeteer and we're going to do that. Is that okay? Sure, we're going to do that. And we have probably have the duck races again. Having the duck races and I know Perry's been working on it. We have City Impact. We just, we just have everybody. Of course, we have the fire department who every year, we've been doing that for nineteen years, every, every year. So it's, it's exciting. It's coming together and something, another thing that was wonderful, you know, I didn't realize it, but our state flag was kind of pattering out there in the wind. But our city manager noticed it and contacted our representative, Mark Hoysinga and said, you know, would you want to do donate that? And he goes, well, sure. So he came on last Saturday and Rose and I were there and that was, he was, he's a great guy. We had a wonderful time visiting with him and Rose brought some cookies and I brought some coffee and we hung out with him for a while and her grandson, who had received a letter from him and so that was great. I'm sorry it wasn't reflected in the newspaper. Judy's recovering from surgery, so I kind of sent that to her thinking I'm going to get some more information from our representative and then put in that our city manager had made the whole thing happen and contacted him and it went out kind of really bare bones today. Didn't have any of that in there, but we had all of us standing out by the, by the flag. It was with a picture, yes. But it could have been, it could have been fleshed out more, but that's okay. I thought I could announce it tonight on YouTube. And we're having, we're getting ready to have a PJ movie night. We have that once a year with the kids and their families and Wesco gives free popcorn, so we're online for that. We had, we went to all eleven classrooms at Cedar Trails to invite all the first graders for their, to get a library card and come down to the Kent Theater for Dr. Doolittle and bring all their families and anybody they want to bring because it's only like three dollars for everyone else, but all the first graders get in free. If they have a family library card or an individual family card, their, their own card, then they can get a free bag of popcorn. So it's a really fun time. We, our electronic sign is bringing in new families and new children and new opportunities. We're so excited about that. Cedar View, I just went yesterday with Tom Noreen and we challenged all the fifth graders to write an essay on a good character quality or traits, behaviors, and they have that for hawks. I can tell you all later what that stands for. Basically honesty and politeness and respect, being respectful. So we got them all charged up about writing. They were very excited every year because there's a fifty dollar first place. Now, we pull out a hundred dollars and then we choose three or four or five kids and invite them to lunch, to a luncheon and to share their story. And I assured them that some of you would say, I'm not getting up and reading my story. I'm not going to do this. But we have your back. Your teacher can come up with you and if you really feel like you're going to faint or cry, they'll get it for you. So they're all excited. We're really also grateful that we had, well, Mark Finkhauser was at the library for our AED machine and training. We had eight staff that got some CPR training and AED training.
You're at four minutes.
He was there and Matt was there. Matt S. C. H. I. E. V. I. N. K., a wonderful young man. And we, we just had a, had a good time and they gave us a free AED machine.
Wonderful.
And free training.
Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Yes. And that came through soul and township, just getting up and sharing like I am here and I was saying, the Girl Scouts are having someone. We only have to pay fifty dollars a person, so we're, we're going to do it. And then they said, you know, we have somebody. I go, really? Okay, let's talk about it. And Metron, we're working with Metron. We helped to get the cassette player.
Donna, I love you.
Is it four, two? Okay. All right. See you later.
I love you. I love you. Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
We're having the biggest loser contest too.
Okay, cool.
Before I start, do you know if the Renaissance Fair is going to be added onto the agenda?
It.
I presented council with paper copies.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have, we have this.
We can add it as a discussion item.
Yeah.
I would like that and I can save my comments for that.
Sure, okay.
That may take more than four minutes to be adequate.
Sure. We'll add it to the.
Thank you.
And we haven't, we haven't set it yet, so. This.
Okay, got it.
That's the, the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes. So we are helping organize the start of summer celebration source.
Woo-hoo.
About that. So basically, we gave this to you guys so you guys could see what all we're planning and what all we're working on. Okay, we would like to do most of our events at Morley Park, just because for parking, bathrooms, in the playground with the kids, because we're going to do a lot of kiddo activities. A lot of like bounce houses, you know, a lot of just different really fun stuff. So some, we're going to do a picnic, just all sorts of stuff. So basically, we just wanted you guys to see this. You guys can see what's going to be coming down the pipe. So each individual organization that, so each day is kind of a different company that's kind of sponsoring it, right? So Enslay team is doing one day, so we'll turn in our own event application with our own mapping and things like that. So this is just really for informational for you guys. And then we did put in there to make sure that we could reserve the pavilion for kind of that whole week. So we make sure that none of our events have, you know, no place to take place, basically.
Do we have the calendar out for that?
Yeah, so one of the reasons that's kind of being presented to councils, there are likely to be problems with each, you know, event trying to do their thing at the same place at the same time. And it's going to be putting us into a difficult position trying, trying to figure out which events, you know, have priority or if there's maybe an accommodation that can be made. Because in addition to the Renaissance Fair, the Chamber events, we also have the Life Walk. It's going to be put on down in Morley Park at about the same time.
Yeah, that, that's actually on our calendar. That's part of, part of ours.
That, that might be helpful.
That's very helpful.
It's already in there. It's already in everything that y'all have. So we anticipated, they actually reached out to us today and told us that they still plan on doing that. So we will be gracious and like we want every different business and every different organization that wants to do something this week, we want them to be able to do it. So whatever we can do as a chamber to help make that happen, we're excited to do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's that?
Meeting on Wednesday. Oh, we have a start of summer celebration meeting at what time?
Eight AM.
Eight o'clock at Perry's place, this coming up Wednesday. So if y'all want to come.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment at this time? Going once, going twice? Alrighty. Then we have, we do not have any public hearings. We just have an A. Okay. At this time, I would like to adopt the agenda and we were looking to add as a discussion item. It would be item G? No, F. EF, yes. Item F.
Where's E?
E is discussion on.
Discussion's number eight.
Yeah.
And so there's just. Oh, I see. It's on the next page.
Yeah, the E is discussion on the outdoor wood burners ordinance. So it'd be F.
Madam Proton, just discussion on community events.
Yeah.
I, I understood that it was specifically on this community event.
Is that not part of the same? I guess I'm confused. Is the Renaissance Fair part of the summer celebrat- Well, I think the opinion would be not ours. I mean, that's up to who's presenting the event. Well, we'll call it community event. We'll let them help clarify that as we have our discussion.
I would make a motion to add eight F, a discussion on community events.
Support.
Madam Proton, I'd like to add a discussion about the status of the.
You need to vote on adding the one that we just.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, we've added item F.
Okay, I'd like to add a discussion about the status of the Skinnerfield lease.
Okay, as a discussion item?
Yes, and I believe we should be getting a financial report from.
So that should be item G?
Yes, please.
So I'm looking for a motion to add item G, a discussion of the Friends of Skinnerfield updates and contracts.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We will add a item G. All right, then. With, if there's no other changes, I am looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. The agenda is adopted. Move on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member and does not require the support of other council members. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The consent agenda passes. Action items. Action item A, a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget amendments as presented.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item A as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion? I would just like to say that our finance director has again done a wonderful job and it's highly readable. And I've been through a lot of budgets for a lot of places under a lot of directors and you are very, very good at this. So thank you for that. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton votes yes. And the budget is approved. Onto item B, motion to set budget workshop for March twenty second, twenty twenty at six PM.
Madam Proton?
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth.
Me.
Twenty six.
As presented anyway.
Okay. Is that working for people?
March twenty sixth.
March twenty sixth. It's a Thursday.
As far as I know.
Like to make a motion that we approve item B as presented.
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion? Does the six o'clock time works for people?
I can make it work.
Okay. Because that's an hour earlier than a regular.
Yeah, but I think I have enough time to.
Okay, we're good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. We have a budget workshop set. Motion to direct the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and as needed, department heads and other city officials to facilitate the review of the twenty twenty recodification project.
I'd like to make that motion to direct the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, as needed, department heads and other city officials to facilitate the review of the two thousand twenty recodification project.
I would second that.
Any discussion? I would just like to say that I'm really grateful that Rose attends so many of those planning commission meetings. She really has stepped up to help keep council in the loop along with the mayor who is on the planning commission.
It's, it's a good thing for us to do this. We were pretty far behind and it's been very interesting and a learning experience to watch the planning commission and how hard they work and how diligent they are on doing the right thing for our city.
I agree. And it's, we're a very old community. And we have some very interesting ordinances of where things are and where they were and where they're not. I'm, I'm really glad that they're putting in, well, it's really a pretty heavy lift to make that happen. So any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Motion to approve North Kent Community Enrichment Bylaws Changes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve North Kent Community Enrichment Bylaw Changes.
Support. Any discussion? This is, just to clarify for anyone who might not know, this is basically what used to be Perks and Rec. And they have kind of reconfigured and are trying to make it, I think, more outreach friendly and also just, I mean, not that they weren't outreach friendly, but to create a bigger scope of voices to be heard and then also to provide some additional programming that might not have fit under the specific categories of Perks and Rec. That's my understanding.
That was a good long way to say it. I'd say diversifying, but yes.
I was trying to put it in a way that I thought people would understand. So any other discussion?
These changes will be, just make it a little bit more efficient. The meetings when I started took a long time. They didn't always have a quorum. But I think things are going pretty good now. Ms. Falcon, do you have anything to add?
And thank you to Ms. Falcon for sitting on that board. We greatly appreciate that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes. Discussion items, A, ordinance two, 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 an ordinance to amend chapter forty dash, chapter forty zoning of the city code of ordinances, rezoning map, first reading. I don't know about you all have looked at this map so my eyes cross. So although I do have a slightly map obsessed twelve-year-old who was very excited about this on the kitchen table the other night because it is in very cool colors. So and he has actually asked me to laminate it, so I don't know what that says, but.
We could get him a giant poster size if you'd like.
I would love that. I would totally buy that. Seriously. That's like a birthday present.
And we might just do that.
I would totally pay for that.
So for, if I could, just for a few seconds, so going along with the, all the work the planning commission's been doing. The last update to the zoning map was, I believe, two thousand six or two thousand seven. Horribly out of date. There were a number of errors that we identified in it. And I want to say I took the liberty to fix the mixed use district, but I think the mixed use district kind of far, was a little too far reaching. So I, I think this update is the right thing to do and it's moving in the right direction and I think the planning commission worked on it for twelve months.
A long time.
I can attest that the zoning, zoning is not ever easy. Because we worked on it for a long time before too.
Yeah, Ms. Race, you were on the, the, do you have anything to add to it?
Nope.
Ms. Powell?
Don't.
Okay, Ms. Nixon? Mr. Gross?
Only comment that I'd like to make is no matter how you do it, somebody's not going to be happy with it.
Well, this is, this is discussion, so I wanted to make sure everybody had an opportunity to speak to it. So then I guess we will move on if we have no other, this was our first reading, no specific questions or anything you want to identify or talk about. Twenty eighteen, premise identification policy, review of progress. So this is the, getting the street numbers, the, the address numbers on your house to make sure that if you are having a heart attack or your house is on fire, that Marty can find you. So that's kind of a big deal. So any discussion? Any comments?
Things are kind of far and few between, between at this point. Coenforcement officer's done a pretty good job of identifying things as she drives around. The few that exist that are still leftover are the ones where it'll be on the mailbox but not on the house or they'll have it on one side of the house, but it's not the street side that they need to be on, little things. But I'm actually very happy with how the community reacted to it. Of course, there were some people were not happy that they'd have to spend five dollars to put numbers on their house, but overall, people did pretty well with it, I think.
Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
It is kind of nice to, to look at a building and know that there's two apartments upstairs or, you know, whatever, if there was an emergency or just to know that there's people up there and if you could ever help them or something was going on, at least we'd know where that apartment is.
Yeah, it is, it is critical for our first responders to be able to find you. So that is a, and, and we do have some kind of, you know, wonky, we're Souths and we have, I mean, our, our community is old. So those labels are really important. And if it's two o'clock in the morning and you've called nine one one because you're having a heart attack, we sure would like them to be able to find you. So that is, that is the point. Yeah. Any other discussion? And we will move on to the amphitheater policy. And I'm assuming this will become even more important as the weather warms up and we'll have more folks wanting to use it.
I honestly didn't know how difficult it would be to come up with a set of policies and guidelines for the amphitheater. I'm thankful for both Sue Wolf and all the members of the amphitheater subcommittee that have been helping me with this. You know, I, I like to tighten things up and I can't even think of the correct words on it, but originally had nine PM Monday through Thursday and ten PM on Friday and Saturday, Friday through Sunday. You know, all, all those numbers are kind of up to council's discretion. The exceeding ninety decibels at Maple Street, I've not been able to get out there with a set of speakers and actually measure it. So some of these things may have to be amended again at some point. But in particular, number five, I did change weddings do not require public liability insurance. So I originally was against allowing private individuals and private groups to use the amphitheater building because in my opinion, it should be used for.
The community.
Public entertainment, yeah.
Sure.
But we've actually had a number of people who've contacted us asking to use it for a wedding. And you know what? Weddings are very low key. They're not, you know, people aren't going to break their legs or set the place on fire. At least I hope not.
In theory.
And so I, I, I put in there just for council to consider allowing weddings to use it and also that weddings would not require public liability insurance. Because it should be a private affair, which kind of goes along with some of the on, the other discussion items I put in front of you. Is that there are some other communities that don't require liability insurance for these types of low-key events. Weddings, picnics, you know, things like that. So just for discussion purposes, I thought I'd mention that to council, see if there's any thoughts one way or the other. Subpart twelve, I put as an alternative to just no pets, that we would allow pets on a six-foot leash. There was a split with the subcommittee about what they want to do on that. Fifteen mirrors the changed hours that were up in ten. And then number eighteen, I still don't know how to feel about this. We did have some Christmas carolers who wanted to use it in December and they wanted to have candles. And the staff felt that not only were candles a fire risk, but also that dripping wax onto the amphitheater was not a good idea. So I then proposed, well, we just want to allow open flames anywhere near the thing and set fifty foot. That could be a hundred, a hundred fifty foot. I don't care. We just don't want it near the building. But I also do have some sympathy for people who might want to be out there in December, Christmas caroling. And so I did leave open the possibility that they could use heaters of some kind. But I would want, obviously, the Cedar Springs Fire Department to approve of that and make sure that it would be done safely. So I guess I presented to council for discussion on any of those points, if they have any other thoughts or suggestions on the policies themselves.
Counselor Nixon?
So are, are dogs currently allowed in the other parks in Cedar Springs if they're leashed?
Correct, yes, they are.
Okay. Okay, and so the, the fifty foot, or excuse me, the six-foot leash at the amphitheater, would that be all the time then? Or would it only be for specific events?
So if you were to bring your dog to the Hardest Cedar Springs Park when there's no event going on, it has to be on a six-foot leash. That's just all the time in the rule. I put it into these policies. It's not like we're going to send the deputies out to arrest you, you know, if your dog's on a four-foot leash or a eight-foot leash. It's more one of those things where, hey, it's the rules and we expect a certain amount of, just like the no smoking in the parks. We're not going to send somebody to tackle you and, and, and put a fire hose on you to put your cigarette out. We expect people to follow the rules. Now, of course, if somebody were to be obnoxious about this and they'd have their pit bull or their rottweiler who's very aggressive off-leash, it then gives the police, if necessary, the rule to enforce. It then gives the police, if necessary, the rule to enforce.
I guess my question then is, um, were they considering, when there's an event happening at the amphitheater, were they. Saying that perhaps it would be better to not bring dogs at all then? Because if this is always our standing rule.
Yeah.
That your pet must be leashed.
Yep. So you'll see it's listed as an alternative to allow animals on a six-foot leash. Um, but the subcommittee, at least half the subcommittee recommended that there just be no animals whatsoever at the amphitheater during an event. Due to the number of kids running around, due to the compactness of people being next to each other.
Okay.
Um, they just feared that having a dog on a six-foot leash, they might act out aggressively if they got bumped into or whatever else.
Cause if someone brings a dog that is not used to that environment.
Sure.
Along, along, sorry. No, if you were first, go ahead.
Ms. Race, and then, and then we'll move on to.
So is this time of ten PM Monday through Thursday or eleven PM Friday through Sunday year-round?
Well, and so it's up to council. Yeah, I mean, council can put any number in there and if council wants, they can say through the summer, it's ten o'clock. Through the winter, it's starting April first, starting November first. Um, if council would like to, I could look into that further, um, because the discussion was, well, in the summer, the sun doesn't go down until ten o'clock.
Right.
Um, whereas ten o'clock, you know, in the winter, I've been asleep for three hours. Yeah, so.
Kids in school and, you know, during the week and.
So I could certainly bring that as an alternative.
Okay.
Council would like.
Yep.
Rachel? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Marty.
I'm all about, I'm all, I'm, I'm still on Marty and the heaters.
I've been called worse things, but.
Sorry, I'm all on Marty and the heaters. Cause I was gonna ask you if you had a policy on specific heaters. But I was saving it until other people were done, when he was talking about the heaters. Go ahead.
I have two things.
Mr. Gross?
Uh, one, is it possible for it to be set up for hours outside of those designated hours with review and approval?
Yeah, so.
Okay, I just didn't happen to catch that part in there.
Number twenty-four, events that cannot abide by these rules may ask community event status.
Okay.
And then they're expected to specifically identify which rule they can't follow. So the whole point of this is similar to what we've done with the community events. Um, is that if they can follow these rules, and these are fairly basic rules, uh, that I just administratively could approve it. But if they want to break any of these rules, it comes to you guys.
Okay, the other is that if we're looking at restricting dogs at a event in the park. Then do we look at a situation like red flannel day? Cause there's frequently dogs with red flannels and things of that nature on, they're wandering the streets with a prowler. Some of them aren't necessarily as friendly a dog as others. So, uh, when do we draw the line as to when you can have a dog in town on a leash and when you can't? And that's, that's, it sets up a situation if we're setting up a guideline, then where all does this guideline go?
Well, the law, the law every day of the year is that your dog has to be on a leash.
Exactly.
Um, although I, I would imagine the deputies have bigger concerns on red flannel day.
Sergeant Probst.
And of course, red flannel is a community event, although they don't specifically ask that dogs be exempt from the leash law that day. Um, you know, it's my expectation that if you have your dog out on red flannel day, it's on a leash.
Well, I think to clarify, what, um, Mr. Gross was saying is if we're going to disallow dogs at an event at the amphitheater.
At the park, yes.
During an event.
Yeah.
Should we be disallowing dogs at other events? Like for example, should we disallow a dog in an event for red flannel? And I would advocate the difficulty with that is red flannel is the entire town. And how do you not have your dog in your town on red flannel day? I mean, I guess we could say they can't be on Main Street or something to that effect, but.
I apologize if I misunderstood what you're asking.
I think, I think basically.
Did I clarify it correctly, Mr. Gross?
I think it would be better stated if the event itself chose to regulate that. Versus a must of putting it as a standard.
Make it an option for the event? To disallow dogs?
They should take in consideration as to whether they want dogs at their event or not. And it's not, we're not setting it up as a set, a city standard.
Sure.
As an individual standard based on the desires of the people that are having the event.
Yeah, I know a lot of people have dogs in their wedding. And if we're back to letting people have weddings.
That was the only other comment I had.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Powell?
Uh, number fifteen, um, ten PM Monday through Thursday, eleven PM Friday through Sunday. I'd like to see the Sunday night be held along with the weekday nights. Cause traditionally Monday morning is, uh, the time when folks go to work and school. Not everybody, but. Uh, eleven o'clock on a Sunday night seems a little late to me.
Well, of course, council could choose any time they want for any of these things.
Do, are we gonna vote on them eventually or?
Yeah, I mean, again, at this point, it's just a discussion because you guys haven't seen this in a couple of months.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, as I was saying before, this is amazingly one of the hardest policies I've had to write.
About that.
Yeah. Um, so I'm, I'm trying to take everybody's thoughts into consideration.
It looks pretty good other, you know, it's just complicated and it's gotta be like a living document like everything else we have.
Anything else, Ms. Powell?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Nixon?
Um, I would like to see, uh, during this full year, a little earlier during the week. Just because once again, the kids gotta go to sleep and if they're in that neighborhood, they're not gonna, depending on whether it's music or something. I mean, it could be an event that doesn't, isn't, you know, making, making a lot of noise, but. I'm sure that depends on what they're doing also.
I was hoping to get a cassette deck out there and actually pump up the volume. Cause we do actually have some donated speakers. And, um, I spent quite a bit of time looking at how loud decibels actually are. And so the hope is that we are able to set a level that if you're standing at Maple Street, you can hear it, but it's not so loud that it's obnoxious. Which of course then from past Maple Street, you know, the rest of the neighborhood should hear as a low roar and not, you know, what it was maybe at the first event with Mr. Gabe Park.
They do have it designed to amplify very well.
I've heard that.
Amphitheater, huh?
So.
To protect.
It's good like, yeah, like, like Pa- Mrs. Powell said, it is going to be as, we're gonna learn, cause this is our first, you know. You're working with it, so it's all gonna be things that can change, so.
Anything else?
I think that, um.
Ms., Ms. Race?
Last summer with that first event that we had, um, they weren't even in the amphitheater. They were out in the middle. Um, I actually drove from my house to the amphitheater because it was so loud. I could hear every cuss word he was saying. So I was a little not happy.
Yeah, I did.
But then I was like, well, he's not even in it. But we again are doing a lot of work and we have things that we have to do, um. But it does help. I, I would assume it'd help if he was actually in the amphitheater, then it. Kind of pushes it that way.
I don't know.
So hopefully that'll, yeah.
Okay, other? I just have a couple of things. Um, one on, I, I don't disagree with the heaters. But we would, that would require, does the fire department have a standard on what can be plugged in? Is there like a thing that we can hand to them to say like, this is acceptable, this isn't acceptable? Does the fire department have any stats like that or a specific thing if they were to plug a heater in? And like what would be safe, what isn't, as far as like, I don't know, amps or?
And that's, that's how you, uh, end up upsetting the party.
Okay.
Don't ask, don't tell.
We do not, as of today, do we not have a written policy?
Okay.
I rely on the public and a little common sense.
Okay.
Um, and, and definitely go down and have a discussion with the individuals. Um, on a, as needed basis. Surely somebody's not gonna stick a portable heater inside the amphitheater and work walls, assuming you would hope. Um, Mr. Womack and I have had discussions with the candles and the, uh, open pit fires and stuff. And, uh, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of money to beautify that section of town. And I, I'd hate for somebody to come in and, and have a campfire there and destroy underground sprinklers and grass and stuff like that.
I totally agree.
So at, at this point in time to summarize it, no, we do not have a written policy. With Mr. Womack's assistance, something we could probably do if, if we felt we need to.
Okay.
I, I don't really see that there's a need for, or maybe four events during the winter to write a policy. Um, when you're not gonna have to worry about it.
We probably could have a simple, like, anything of this wattage.
Well, I know the Red Flannel Festival and, um, Mr. Ringer at the Beer Fest, uh, has an portable propane heater.
Right.
And they do not seem to have any problems, but there, again, some common sense.
Okay. And then I have one other question that I didn't feel like was addressed in here. So our state fireworks law says that, and it specifies the holidays. That people may utilize fireworks. And as a city, we don't even have the ability to restrict on ordinances for that. What if someone were to want to, um, have a Fourth of July festival there? And wants to blow fireworks?
Well, I, I think you're misstating the law just a little bit. And that is insofar as they could set it off on their front lawn if they want. But they have no special ability to come to the city's park and just blow stuff up. We can prohibit that.
Okay. That was, and I guess, are we prohibiting it? And do we have language that, cause I didn't see anything that said anything about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure we do. Of course, that might be a city park thing. Of course, do I need to start saying, well, you can't slap a trout against the wall now? You know, there's just crazy stuff that are gonna happen.
Having went out to Rigo Park at one o'clock in the morning when bottle rockets were flying. You probably remember this.
It was my dad that was setting them off, probably.
Well, I was, no, you're, it wasn't your dad. But, um, when you were, when you were living next door and Clint was running down the street at one o'clock in the morning. Um, and down at Rigo Park, I, I don't, you know, and there was a very confrontational seventeen-year-old that I can do whatever I want. Cause this is the.
Well, sounds like we'll need to address fireworks coming up.
So, and I'm not even saying like if someone, for example, were having a wedding and wanted to have sparklers, I don't know that that's a deal breaker. Again, if they're not near the building and they take care of the wires and so on. But, um, maybe we need some language on it.
I would count that under open flame.
Well, I'm saying if it's not near the building.
Yeah. But I mean, that, that, right now, as, as the language is, it's fifty foot from the building, so I would.
Right.
If I'm going to write a policy about fireworks, I'm just gonna exclude them from city parks.
Okay.
Didn't we address, don't, don't we as a city get to address some of those firework, um, issues?
Yeah, so last year.
They adjusted, they adjusted the state laws some.
Yeah.
Last year, I think I brought it to late June, cause that's when the law passed and said, eh, maybe next year.
Yeah.
So.
So, so we can address that.
We can, to a certain extent.
But I didn't see any language in here and I thought maybe that's a thing we wanna think about.
Mm-hmm.
Because, I don't know, it could be a thing.
It can.
So.
Anything can be a thing.
Especially bottle rockets.
Yeah, I'm, bottle rockets make me crazy.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not gonna lie. So, anything else? So we'll move on then to event insurance requirements?
I mostly just wanted to put this in front of the council to start thinking about as a possibility. Um, that there is at least this other community that I found that doesn't require liability insurance for some events. Um, you know, ve- very low levels of activities. Let's see if I can see the language here. Class one, let's see here. Block parties, picnics and wedding ceremonies of less than twenty people. Because of course, uh, somebody might want to hold a wedding is not gonna have a commercial liability insurance like the, uh, Chamber of Commerce has. So requiring that of them causes all sorts of heart palpitations and headaches. Um, so it might be one of those things that council may wish to explore at some point.
Twenty feels really small.
Well, and that's just their policy.
I would say maybe more like fifty or even seventy-five, if you're talking about a low-level event like a picnic or a.
Something not potentially dangerous or.
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
You could have a wedding anywhere from twenty to a hundred and fifty people, so it would have to, it, you know, would have to be. Make their application through the city to decide whether it's a low-level event or if it's gonna be a big blowout.
Well, I think we're only talking about the ceremony.
Oh.
Um, we're not letting Rose have her party at the.
What?
At the amphitheater with alcohol and all the other accoutrements.
Without insurance?
Not at all.
Well, I just won't get married again.
I'm sure Chris will be relieved.
I was gonna say, I'm sure your husband is relieved.
I'm sure he is too.
So. Okay, Ms., anything else? Ms. Powell?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
No.
Ms. Nixon?
Uh, no.
Ms. Race? Mr. Gross? Okay. I, I would agree that I do think that it should be okay to have a class of events that probably don't require that. That could still be in that spirit of community that aren't put on by a specific organization. All right, moving on to event funding. Item D, Barry, I'm not gonna say his last name correctly.
Roubaix.
Roubaix Bicycle Race?
So there is a bicycle race in Hastings, Michigan, uh, called Barry Roubaix, which is based off of the Paris Roubaix. I think it's, is it Barry County over there?
Okay.
Um, but any case, uh, Barry Roubaix started in two thousand nine, uh, so it's not that long ago. Started with about two hundred racers. It now has thirty-five hundred racers. It sells out like eleven months in advance. Um, and it brings in an estimated five hundred thousand dollars each year, uh, to the economy of the local community.
Ah.
So we do have, um, a group that is interested in putting on this type of race here in Cedar Springs. Uh, I've been working with Sergeant Probst to deal with what the police safety requirements are going to be. Um, because obviously you can't have people blowing through intersections at thirty miles an hour, um, and not have traffic stopped in some way. Um, but, so it got me thinking, similar to what the city does for the Red Flannel Festival. Uh, we might want to consider, um, putting some money towards the policing for this event. Um, I'd hate to see an event like this not happen or die on the vine because the first two or three years, they just couldn't afford it. So it's one of those things where I think a small investment from the city council could pay dividends, huge dividends in the near future if this event catches on. So they're working towards, I believe, a May thirtieth event date. Um, and I do not have a number for you at this point. Uh, I'll be approaching the DDA as well to see if they would put some money towards this. Um, but it's just something I wanted to put in front of the council now so that they're aware that it's coming up. Um, and I guess present an opportunity to discuss with the, something they'd like to consider.
Okay, any discussion?
Is that a nonprofit event?
Uh, so it's, it's a little complicated. Um, so I don't know if the actual bicycling group that's doing it is a nonprofit of some kind. Um, but it could, it's complicated insofar as they're gonna be working with a local, uh, business to help with the event on. So is the event itself nonprofit? I don't know. Are they teaming up with a business that is for profit? Yes. And of course, that's how all these events happen. Um, I know a real estate, uh, group that puts a lot of events on and they put their own money towards it. That doesn't mean that the chamber isn't nonprofit. It's nonprofit, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes, the chamber's nonprofit.
Very good.
I'm sorry, and a tea shop. A tea shop puts on lots of events as well.
Probably a five oh one C four would be my guess. Probably a five oh one C four would be my guess. For sure.
The chamber's a five oh one C four. Tea shop's just a nonprofit.
Okay, I was, I was saying the chamber is a five oh one C four. That's between you and the IRS. All right, any other questions?
So there really is, it really is scheduled for May?
That's the tentative date proposed.
Proposed.
Okay.
May thir- May thirty-first, you're saying?
I thought it was thirtieth, but I'm not looking at the calendar, so.
Okay.
Late May.
End of May.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to taking a look, seeing and, and helping provide some assistance. Part of it depends on how much assistance they're looking for.
Do you have another?
Molly's got a question.
Well, I will go down everybody, but you just looked offensive like you...
No, I was, I was looking at Molly.
Okay.
See what she had to say.
Jackson? Uh, so I, I have read over the, um, sort of the draft of the policy. And I think it's good for us to go in as partners in these events that can bring in additional revenue to all of our downtown businesses. Um, we are, we are trying to grow in a way that makes sense for Cedar Springs. Um, my, my caveat is we do have an existing contract with a particular nonprofit. At which we are currently, the two halves of the community are at a truce. So I would hope that that existing contract would still be in effect past this policy.
You looking for comments? So, um, it's my professional and legal opinion that that contract is illegal and null and void. But as long as the council would like to uphold it, there's nothing I can do to prevent you from upholding it.
The attorney at the time did not think it was illegal, null, or void.
I would imagine that that same attorney would now say that it would be null and void.
That'd be interesting, considering it's the same attorney.
Every time you put two attorneys in a room, you're gonna have three opinions. But, yeah, I mean, you know, the council can, uh, spend their money on what they wanna spend it on. Um, of course, I'd love to see an event that, when I started, was six thousand dollars, and this year was nine thousand dollars, be capped. Um, or have some kind of new arrangement worked out, worked out. But, you know, I'm looking at, sorry, excuse me, I got something in my throat. I'd like to see some kind of policy be put into place so that these new events know what they're getting themselves into.
Comment? Comment?
I agree. I mean, whatever we set up, it can't be infinite and expanding.
Yep.
Okay.
But, uh, I would like to see it happen.
Um, I would just say, there is a certain amount, and, and, um, Council Powell and I, a really long time ago now, went to Rockford to talk to them about how they did their community events. And they provide policing for all of their community events at no charge to, and to the, to the event putting it on. And, I mean, we could talk about how they make that happen and what that looks like, but at some point, at the end of the day, um, if this bicycle folks, and we had some bicycle folks do this three years ago, four years ago, they came through town...
Yeah, they still do that once or twice a year.
And they basically said, we're coming through town. Just to give you a heads up, if they're on a public street or they're on the White Pine Trail, we can't really say, no, you can't do that.
This is a bicycle race.
I understand, but I'm just saying there are some of these structures, depending on how they're set up, that while, yes, I think it's a good idea to support it, and we should, especially if they're coming to us, that we also should look at it through the lens of, and in race, not necessarily, but with a thing like a big bike, we're gonna bike from here to here. Um, we don't really have the ability to say, no, I'm sorry, you can't come through our community. And we are legally obligated to provide the policing for that. We don't get to say, I'm sorry. You don't get to be safe while you ride on the street through our community because you didn't ask us if you could put three hundred bicycles on our street. So...
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm missing where you're going.
I'm saying, yes, I think we should do this, but we should also do it with the lens of, there's a certain amount of this, if we don't embrace it, it's gonna happen regardless.
Unless, if I may, unless you know something I don't know, I don't feel that we are obligated to allow, to provide police coverage and so forth for any organization or group that's passing through the community.
We, we kind of are.
I believe if we're not part of the, if we're not part of the established event, I don't think we're required to do so.
If they're on our street and they're within the laws, am I wrong, Mr. Probst?
We don't provide safety for them. We, we make sure they abide by the law. The law's set in place to provide safety.
Exactly.
Correct.
We don't provide extra safety for that.
You don't provide extra safety, but we are still required...
The only thing I would do would be citing them for not riding correctly like the law says on the side of the road.
Right.
I'm not gonna make the road safer for them if they have a big group.
Of course, but at the same time, we can't say, no, you can't come through here.
No, but if they don't stop at the stop sign at seventeen mile...
Of course.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. We're not obligated to create a situation where they can just pass through.
We are not obligated to create a situation, but if three hundred bicycles decide they're going to ride through our community...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be safe for them to let them do that.
Well...
They would have to, they would have to talk to the community to make sure, otherwise they could get sued if they just went, let the bicycles just went through the stop sign. They, the, the group that's doing the bicycle race has to morally and legally take care of the event. So they would have to approach us anyway.
And on a race, that's true, but Rose, when was this? Three years ago? Four years ago? It was longer than that, because it was before Kent County was doing our policing.
There's a, there's several different biking things that go through town, but it's not our event.
I understand, but I'm trying to say, at some level, like, we should embrace this. Because at some level, there's a certain amount of this that can happen whether they tell us or not.
If I may, I think that's what I said, I would like to see us provide something. But what we're obligated to do and what we decide to do is two different things.
I'm saying I would like to encourage people to come to us by providing some of this. Because if we don't, there is a certain level of it that's going to happen regardless. And we should kind of acknowledge that. And we saw that with Rockford. That was sort of the way that the, um, who was the person who ran that?
I can't remember.
She was like the assistant clerk who was in charge of it, I would say?
I, I guess I would like to say, let's have the, uh, city manager look into this further, and we can discuss it further later time.
So I think, if what I'm hearing correctly, is that we're mostly in favor. That's what I'm hearing, Mr. Manager?
Sorry?
We are mostly in favor of you pursuing this. That is my understanding. Can I just kinda get a nod from...
We can't not look into it, you know, it's...
I think...
Definitely look into it.
Yeah, definitely, because I think if it can become a bigger thing every year, like it has in Hastings, it's gonna bring more people into the community and help, and help the whole community, and that's what we're looking for.
I don't disagree. Okay. Any other questions, comments, before we move on? All right, moving on to the Amphitheater Summer Concert Series. Economic development, potential of festivals and culture, do you want this as an action item? The motion to contribute fifteen hundred dollars to the Summer Concert Series being planned?
Uh, so...
Cause that, it's not, I mean, it's a discussion item?
Yeah, so I, I, I normally try not to bring you action items on a first reading or first, uh, look at. Um, of course, I've been trying to work on this. There's a business owner who's helping me try to some, find some of this funding. Um, but I think it would, uh, make it a lot easier to come up with the full amount if council were to commit to a certain amount. Um, again, I'm also going to approach the DDA. Um, I know that some of these other groups like the Chamber are considering putting on their concerts.
We, now, we've done the, the concert series in the past. I mean, that's not new. What have we contributed in the past?
I honestly didn't even know that this board had done any summer concert series in the past.
Yeah, on Thursdays in Morley Park?
Yeah, that would be Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec that did it, but we contributed funding towards it.
I'm not sure. I know Red Flannel did, different...
I feel like they did.
Community groups did. We might have. I just don't remember it.
Do you have a line item on that?
Not that I recall either.
Would like to ask one question?
Sure.
Is the fifteen hundred dollars firm right now?
Well, so, we're expecting it's gonna cost about a thousand bucks per week to bring in a band, set things up, do things. The hope is to have eight concerts or eight entertainment events of some kind, starting, uh, coinciding with the Library Star Summer Reading Program.
Okay.
Um, so I'm looking for about eight thousand dollars. Um, the businesses, you know, have generally supported it, but I haven't received any money or pledges. I did have one individual who made a pledge. Um, and I have another business who is going around to businesses and asking for pledges as well. So I anticipate I'll probably get close, um, to eight thousand if the city council and the DDA both vote to approve.
Now, will the Parks and Rec still be doing their summer concert?
So my understanding is that the Parks and Rec does not wanna use the amphitheater because there's currently no playground for the children to play at.
I see.
Now, of course, as you guys know, we're working with the CBDT to put the natural playground up at the amphitheater, but that's probably another year or two away.
Sure.
Um, and I believe the, uh, Parks and Rec also was considering moving their concert, um, around the other communities as well. And not just do all their concerts in Morley Park. We'd also like to maybe do one in, was it Velzy Park over in Elgoma?
Soul and Township.
Soul and Township. So they'd like to kinda spread theirs out a little bit more, because it's obviously an intergovernmental body.
So the eight concerts you're talking about would be all at the heart of Cedar Springs?
Correct.
Do we have any concerns about them overlapping the concert and the park series?
We're proposing Wednesdays.
Okay, cause they do Thursdays once a month, right? Okay.
Yep, I believe, uh, Rockford also does Thursdays, so that's why we picked Wednesdays.
Okay.
The reason I was asking is that if that's the firm right now and you think that's what's gonna take to, to solve the things and get it started, I'm prepared to make a motion that we would go to an action item with this and, uh, provide the fifteen hundred dollars for the Summer Concert Series. If that's, if you feel fifteen hundred dollars...
Are you making a motion?
If, well, if fifteen hundred dollars is sufficient, if you think it needs to be two thousand, then whatever, whatever's here, you know? Uh, and I don't know how the rest of you feel about it. I think anything we do to bring people into the community and assist the, the people involved with the chamber, I'm all for it.
Okay. Didn't you, didn't you write in there up to fifteen hundred?
Well, so, um, with, with the pledges that I'm aware of, I think, and again, assuming that this board and the DDA step up, I've got seven thousand.
Okay.
Um, now, if I'm able to convince more people to put money, more money into the pot, then we could reduce, you know, for each person. But I, I was hoping to budget this for next year. Um, obviously, this year I just didn't have it budgeted because of when we got the amphitheater. We still don't have a policy, but I'm hoping to have it in the budget.
Yeah, the amphitheater didn't exist.
Yeah. So it is wanting to be a question next year if you guys approve it as part of the budget.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we move this to an action item and have a vote on it this evening.
Okay. So are you making a motion to move it to an action item?
That's what I just said.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is now on the table as a action item? I will take a motion.
Like make a motion that we contribute fifteen hundred dollars to this, uh, Summer Concert Series?
Support. Any discussion? I'll do a roll call, since it's money. Miss Powell?
Yes.
Miss Atchison?
Yes.
Miss Nixon?
Yes.
Miss Race?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton votes yes. Motion carries. We have fifteen hundred dollars to go to concerts at the heart of Cedar Springs. And this takes us to event funding policy, although we...
We touched on this.
Yes. Okay. So this then takes us to discussion on the outdoor wood burners. The, this is a ordinance question, section fourteen dash forty-five regarding an ordinance on outdoor wood burners.
Yep, section sixteen forty-five. Um, when I came on board three and a half years ago, I spent quite a bit of time with the ordinances that existed at that time. And two in particular struck me as really out of place. This one and the para mutual horse racing as a permitted use in the industrial zone.
That'd be Ronnie.
So, um, I discovered why this was in the ordinances. There was an individual who lived, um, not too far here from City Hall, who had a very large, very smoky, um, outdoor wood burner that he used to heat his home. Um, I'm not aware of any other place in the city that has one of these. Um, and just recently, this person moved out of the community and took their wood burner with them. So I don't know of a good reason why this should remain on the books. Those things are ugly. They take up a huge portion of your backyard and they spill smoke all over into your neighbor's yard. So I would like to repeal it, um, but obviously this is council's policy decision.
Is this not a planning commission question?
Uh, I could take it to the Planning Commission if council would prefer me to do that, but it's not in the zoning ordinance.
Oh.
It's sixteen, which is, uh, something not zoning.
Okay. I was thinking it was the zoning thing.
Council can push anything they'd like to the zoning commi- um, Planning Commission and ask their opinion.
I just don't wanna usurp the power of the Planning Commission when it's, I mean, they serve a purpose.
Well, what I could do, um, is put together the repealing ordinance and put it to them first, because I think I'll see them before I'll see you guys again, um, and just ask them to look at, and look at it.
How does everyone feel about that? Lisa?
Is there, I mean, what if somebody comes in to the city and decides they want, decide they want to, um, heat their home differently? This would at least be on the books if they, so are we just gonna, are we gonna make it where you can't, can't have a wood burner in the city?
I think that's the intention.
Yeah, that's what I meant, outdoor wood burner.
Yes. Of course, keep in mind that what happened and why this is on the books...
I was on the Planning Commission when we, when they did this.
So you, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Can I have questions as well?
Okay.
So, um, I did read through this and it, and it sounds like you could still burn wood inside. You could still have a pellet stove inside. Uh, my question would be, so outdoor fireplaces, um, as currently allowed, it's, you have to have it enclosed?
Sure.
Not affected by this?
No.
Okay.
That was actually a thing.
Yeah, that was a different...
Yeah, that was a thing. There was a petition and...
This is functionally having a, your furnace in your backyard.
Right.
Totally different from what, what we're talking about.
They were pretty popular for a while, and I think there were several in town. And the, the, the good part of it was you didn't have your fire in the house. And then they were very efficient as far as putting your wood in there, and they didn't burn right up, but it really heated your house. So, I don't know. I know so few people that have them in the, uh, country, you know, and they swear by them, but I don't know about city use. It's, we burn wood for a long time, and I'll tell you what, I hated every minute of it, but that's all we had.
Yeah, so it gives them a different, they can, I mean, having that outside. It was, uh, cause my sister had it. You couldn't tell inside that they were using a wood burner.
Mm-hmm.
It was just like a regular, you know, did the regular job of a furnace, so that's the difference with having it inside and having it outside.
But could her, could her neighbors tell that she was burning?
No, I don't think so. I think, they had a really good one. I mean, there's a difference.
The reason this came to me is because that next-door neighbor stopped by and was joyous at the fact that the neighbors moved out.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are ni- there are nice ones that really work well, but...
I will tell you, there is...
Is the city a place for them? I don't know.
There is one place in the mayor's house that is my favorite place to be.
Yes.
And that is standing in front of his pellet stove. So there is, there's definitely a place in the world for that type of thing, but it's not in your backyard. It's not blowing smoke at your neighbor's house.
Or kinda snuggly.
Theirs was not. My sister's was not. It, there was a newer, the newer ones that don't, that you can't even, all you see is a little smoke coming off the top and... It, there was a newer, the newer ones that don't, that you can't even, all you see is a little smoke coming off the top and that's it.
We're back to maybe Planning Commission, and if they're going to allow it, put some specs on it?
But, if I may, that's the two options I feel we have. Either repeal it or put some more teeth into setbacks. You create the setbacks that are greater. The biggest share of the problem with most of those is they go into a low burn.
Right next to each other.
Then it sets in smallers. And that's when there's not enough heat to drive the smoke totally up. So when it's at a full burn, the smoke is going to go up into the air further than it is at night when it's at a low burn, when somebody's turned the heat down. So, and that's why they're efficient, because they go to low burn. You get up in the morning, toss a little more wood in, and you've got your fire again. But there's two things can be done. Either the setbacks can be greater or it can be repealed. And I'll tell you, there are some wood burners in the community, in my neighborhood, that when they're at a lower fire, I hate the heck out of it. I used to smell a lot of wood smoke as part of the fire department, and it was, uh, so anyway, it's, uh, I see it as two options, repeal it or make, put more strength in it.
Okay, Ms. Nixon?
Just one more question. Saying that there were any of these still in the community, would they be grandfathered at this point?
Yep, much like everything else, if it currently exists, then it would be grandfathered in and told to stop being used.
Okay.
Legal not conforming.
So then I, I, I can see a need for it in the country where you don't have natural gas, but in the city, you absolutely do. And if you don't like natural gas, you absolutely can have a pellet stove that is safe and efficient, or a wood burning furnace in your house if you feel so inclined. But this is, to have one of these in the city is, is unnecessary and a nuisance. And we couldn't get chickens passed because they were quote unquote a nuisance. I can't imagine this. At least chickens you can fence in.
It is a lot closer, they're a lot closer together. I mean, the, you know, neighbors are right next door, so I mean, right close by.
So I guess I'll take it to the Planning Commission, see if they have an opinion, and we'll go from there. At least, at least I could do is bring a draft to you and see.
That would be wonderful. Okay. Then we were adding item F, a discussion on community events.
Yes.
Correct? That included sort of this umbrella of the start of summer celebration and-
This is an addition.
Run fair.
Of course, I have no idea what Mr. Hopkins is handing out, so I-
Well, this is explanation to all the questions you filled me on basically on Tuesday. So this is, there should be enough so you can get one too.
So if I could start before Mr. Hopkins, I would just point out that I've been exceptionally busy this past week. I presented council with all the information that I had available to me on the two events that I received in the last couple of days. I really haven't looked at them. All I know is that there's the potential for conflict with some of the dates and times. And of course, Mr. Hopkins is proposing some things that I'm just not super comfortable with, and I think has the potential for causing liability and, and other conflicts, so I presented.
Now, just to clarify, is the insurance for the run fair coming under the chamber?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's not a chamber sponsor.
Well, it is. The chamber itself is not running the event. I'm running the event with my volunteers, but it's being run kind of like what Cordell dreams-
It's the chamber's insurance.
Yes.
Because at one point it was the library's insurance, which is actually the city's insurance.
Right, and then-
Which gets sort of weird.
Yeah, well, originally when I was talking to Mike to make sure before I went and invested money into insurance, getting the DBA and all this, to run the event myself, I wanted to make sure that he didn't have any confliction with it. And then while he was wondering why I necessarily had to have it made, why we didn't just put it in with the summer reading program and that. And so I talked with the library, and Donna didn't, uh, was not opposed to it, she was happy about it. But when I did turn in my application, Mike was like, "Well, that's technically our insurance, not the library's, so they can't say yes."
Right.
So then I went to the, the chamber at our budget meeting last week, and the chamber agreed, basically if I do it the same as Cordell did, I get all the volunteers, all the sponsors, all that sort of stuff.
So it's under the chamber insurance?
But we have to make sure this was a discussion, that everything that you want to do will be covered.
Okay.
It won't cost any additional.
Well, but you all will make that clear. And again, this is a discussion, this is why we try to hear it twice. So, so, but just to clarify, so that is, that is the new way we're doing this? Okay. So then, then that might solve some of the combat problems?
Well, the, the real problem was that the application was submitted with very few details. You know, of course, I've been to Renaissance Fairs, I have a general understanding of what occurs, but I don't know if there's going to be a flame eater, I don't know if there's going to be fully armored combat. It just wasn't presented to me.
Sure.
When I'm allowed to talk, I'll let you know.
So what I told Mr. Hopkins was, please present us with more details, but based simply on what was originally presented, I did have some minor concerns.
So we're getting more details, and we've clarified it. So, Mr. Hopkins?
Well, my thing right now is I've got checks coming in, that I gotta find out whether I can have the event here or not, because I've been told it shouldn't be a part of the, the start of summer program because it'd be conflicting with other people's stuff. But as the individual that sets these meetings up, that sends their email out to all the other organizations, that schedules the start of summer event basically for the week-long stuff, I have a hard time, I pretty much have to beg a lot of times to get an event on the weekends, because most of the events on the weekends don't really do as much as during the week.
Okay, just to clarify though, this is a question for you with the chamber.
Actually, this is the question, you know, he's the one that told me that it would be conflicting as well.
Okay, if you're part-
So you're saying that you schedule most of the events?
Correct.
So there shouldn't be a scheduling problem?
Correct.
But, okay, just to clarify, this was originally going to be a standalone event. It's now been folded into the start of summer celebration with the chamber. Does the chamber feel that you have a conflict with any of their events?
We moved our events to Morley Park to accommodate, so he, so he can use the heart. So we don't, we, we, like Perry-
Right, right.
-the chamber with us. We want to make sure that we are gracious and do whatever brings the most commerce to our town.
Okay.
So our thoughts was, we'll just move everything to Morley Park. It works better for us anyhow, because we have the pavilion, we have water, we have electric, we have the playground. So it works better for us anyhow. So we graciously said, awesome, go ahead and do it.
Okay, so this is now all part of the same thing?
It is not.
It is not part of the same thing? Okay, you're just using the same insurance?
Well, it just-
And you've juggled your, your locations?
Basically.
To, just to clarify, I'm trying to fully understand what it is that's happening.
Yep, so we had intended on doing it in the heart, and then I found out that he was going to do his event in the heart, or we found out that he was going to do his event in the heart, and we're like, okay, awesome, we'll figure out plan B. And so plan B, we just got him to Morley Park, which is great.
Okay, so I'm assuming if we get that clarified with the city manager-
That was already clarified, that wasn't a problem. Of course, it was a problem a week and a half ago when I was dealing with this issue.
Okay.
But I've obviously spoken with both parties. We've kind of moved on to other issues.
Okay.
Such as not knowing what the Renaissance Fair is going to do, whether council wants to allow people to camp in the city park, whether council wants to allow people to have fire pits in the city park.
Okay.
Things like that.
So we need to talk about camping?
Could we have the rest of his presentation first, please, if I could?
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to clarify, who's doing what, where, with who?
Perhaps, perhaps he can do that.
Go ahead.
What was my intention, was to come clarify all this?
Sure.
Let's just, let's let him like totally finish before we ask any more questions.
Sure.
As against to be anymore, I don't know why God gave me a voice, because I can't ever talk, people always want to stop me. But up until Friday, or actually Monday, I had no indication that there is any conversations of any other events going on, on, until we started having our events, or committee meetings for the start of summer program, because I'm usually the one that sends that out. So I had no idea that the chamber was already planning stuff, because there's meetings happening that I'm aware, unaware of, I guess. And so I had turned in my form, and then it wasn't until I mentioned that I turned in my form that it became an issue with some people. But like they said, they changed where their plans were for it. But I, I went and I typed this up yesterday and this morning, I was trying to crunch it in to appease the city manager to get some of that. He wanted more detail, and I, I thought it was safe just to say a lot like what we did when it was in Morley Park. The only difference was his location and city manager, well, he wanted more detail. So that's what this is. What we're asking for is they let people come dressed up in Renaissance garb. Some will be dressed like Lord of the Rings characters and stuff like that, King Arthur, Robin Hood. We will have activities such as the double K farms. They will come and they will have sheep sharing and goat milking demonstrations and stuff. And it's, this is, I know I've heard twice this week that it's not a family-friendly event, but as Ms. Nixon, you've been to a couple of them, has it been a family-friendly event from what you've seen?
The, the ones that I was at was definitely where my daughter enjoyed it thoroughly.
And so a lot of the activities are actually children-based. We have Dartmoor Colony Alert Craft, they come every year and they're, they're always free to us. And they're a huge portion of our entertainment. They have an arena they set up where they let children use foam boppers, as they call them, or foam swords to have combat with. And there's never been any injury with it, everything is always put into an arena. And the two times that we've had steel sword fighters, they, when they signed their contract or agreement where we hired them, they gave us a copy of their proof of insurance, because we do require that. And the Celts or the Vikings that are looking to come have an encampment, they have no problem with providing the insurance for the things that they offer, because they have to do that anywhere that they have their event. And so everything that is going to need a insurance, they're going to bring their own. And one of the things that the city manager was worried about was like the horse stuff, well, we don't do that, we don't have space enough. And the liability insurance for something like that on its own, just for that portion of the event's like eighteen hundred to two grand. The same way with archery. The, the Vikings and the Celts, they do have axe throwing, but that is set where there is no way anybody to get behind it. That's gotten to be a popular thing. Grand Rapids is setting up some different facilities that that's all they do is axe throwing. And they, they do that within their encampment, and everything is kind of fenced off with that. As far as the, the fire pits, as I tried saying that that was the same as when we had it in Morley Park. If there's a burn ban, of course, there's not going to be, but what they use for fire pits would be enraised fire pits, so it's not going to be damaging the ground, and it's got to be enclosed with a fire extinguisher within fifteen feet, and it can't be unattended.
We allow those now, don't we? Like can't you bring your little barbecue grill to Morley Park?
If it meets the regulations, yes, it has, has to be above the ground. You need to burn from it for anything that is not covered with a screen.
Right, but like if you want to bring your little, I have one that's, I don't know, this big, that you can put charcoal in and you can cook your hot dogs on it.
They're commonly called chimeneas, and there's different varieties, but yes, somewhere allowable.
Okay.
And so then there's, as I had put in the form, that there would be no fire pits near the amphitheater whatsoever. Because the, the main focus is actually, a lot of it is going to be on the other side of the White Pine Trail and that all over there. The McDudley Games, who've approached just about coming, they will need some electricity, so we'll have to actually use the electricity from the amphitheater. There will be a couple of things on the side by the amphitheater, but nothing that's going to have any stakes that may touch the ground more than three to four inches, just due to the sprinkling system. And if, what we're playing on, if everything gets as big as we'd like, the only thing that would have a fire on this side of the White Pine Trail would be there by the flowing well, where we have a storyteller set up. And if anybody's ever seen like any of your medieval TV, TV shows, when somebody's coming into town, you always see like a storyteller or a welcoming person that's like an old beggar that's over a cook pit, that's, that would be that.
Okay. Mr. Manager, other questions?
I just didn't feel like I was presented with enough information with the community event application, which is part of my job to ask questions.
And that's part of why we do this more than once.
Well-
You feel like you're getting those questions answered?
City manager's answering.
Well, I mean, you know, some of this is policy stuff. Do we want to allow and tell people, you can bring your fire pits and sleep in our parks? That's a question for council.
Well, I think we tell them they can bring their fire pits now.
I, I guess I'm not aware of that.
We were talking about the Renaissance, the, the heart of the city.
Right, I understand, but if it applies to other parks, that was, that was what I just asked.
And mind you, on the camping, the general public's not going to camp. The only ones that we're allowing or inviting to tell that they can camp are the, the volunteers, the reenactors, the ones that are partaking in making the fair happen, not the general public.
And we, we've allowed that previously.
Right. Again, like I said, I'm not proposing anything other than, the only difference is, is the location. Because when we originally had this in two thousand and fourteen, that was on the summer solstice weekend. And that's what this weekend is, the summer solstice that we're talking about.
Okay. Do you need more information for clarification?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if he's actually presented us-
I'm not asking you to approve it, I'm just saying, do you have further questions?
Well, I'd like to review the material that was just handed to me, and I haven't seen the map, and I haven't seen the-
I, I'm not asking you to approve it, I'm saying, do you feel like you have everything you need to be able to review it? Or do you have more questions?
I would like to be able to review the material so that I can then perhaps formulate additional questions. And I also have not seen the map, which I usually ask for these types of events.
Got it.
I, I don't know if this is a final list or, you know.
So is that clear to you?
Yeah, well, I just want to, because my world went into a crapshoot on Monday when I started getting conflict, and then he sent me this, and so I just want to make sure that I'm not wasting my time before I start cashing checks and start spending money on stuff.
I think we're just trying to clarify.
I'd like to ask.
Ms. Nixon, and then Mr. Gross?
You had your end up first.
Um, so it, there was some concern about sprinkler systems. On the opposite side of the White Pine Trail from where the library is, is there a sprinkler system over there?
No, no.
No, okay, and we're, we're going, they're all going to be up off the ground?
Yes.
Okay, and there will be something in writing saying the chamber is covering this, under their insurance?
Yes.
Okay, go with God.
But the, the stuff that needs additional insurance, the ones coming, they're providing that insurance. They will give a proof of that insurance.
Sure, and we would love a copy of that too, please.
But the one thing that, again, you know, this is an event that starts out from zero dollars every year that I put this on, then I raise the fund. So just because the stuff's on here doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Sure.
If the funds ain't there. But there are a couple, you know, things that I may like to add in, like if the stuff that's proposed for the north side of Cedar Creek by CBDT, if that's done with the trails and the gardens and stuff over there, I would like to be able to have a, the morning herb walk and stuff like that, nature walks on there. But currently that's not available, and just people just want to walk around over there.
Okay, Mr. Gross?
I got a question also.
I have never been to a Renaissance fair, I just have not, it's not something that I-
It's one of the things, if we want an event in our start of, uh, summer, as everybody's calling it now, uh, this is it. When we done it in Morley Park, when we did it at the Nature Center, uh, which they're very particular about what type of events they have there, and so it'd be weird if it could be there but not here, is that it brings people from out of state. Uh, some of the performers come from Ohio and Wisconsin, and some of them come from Kalamazoo.
Run, run fairs are lovely, no one is, is negating, or I, Renflair, Renfair is not my particular- Run, run fairs are lovely, no one is, is negating or I, a run flair, run fair is not my particular flavor of nerd. I have a lot of flavors of nerd, but run fair is not one of them, but I went and gave a speech. It won for you, I don't know, three years?
Two thousand seventeen, I think, two thousand sixteen?
A few years ago and I would do that again if you.
Yeah, the, the playground equipment in Morley Park just makes it difficult to expand.
Sure, I, I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't think anybody's making a judgment on whether or not a run fair is a.
Madam Mayor, pretend, I relinquish the floor to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the question I have. What is markedly different in this event than what you've had before in Morley Park?
Other than the fact that there's not gonna be playground equipment in the middle of it, is that we can actually have encampments.
Has there been a problem in Morley Park in the past?
No. We've never had a problem with it.
Okay, I've never heard of any either, so, okay.
Okay.
And I don't have any problem with this. Uh, the only thing I would wanna make sure is that if people are camping there, the, the performers and all that stuff, how did, how does the public know that if they're seeing a tent sitting there, why they wouldn't be able to do it?
Because it's an encampment, it's not like you're Dunham tents that you're gonna get.
Okay.
Most people are not just gonna have this stuff in their car.
So it's not like a tent.
Correct, and, and, and we, and I can make an extra posting on the Facebook event and stuff like that.
That would be great, that was my only concern.
Okay.
So is the camping then part of the Renaissance?
Part of the experience.
Experience, okay.
There's a lot, like I said, a lot of these come from a long ways. And expect, the ones that are coming because they wanna support small fairs and small communities, it's all on their own dime, cause there's a good portion of the reenactors that don't charge anything. The only ones that charge are the ones that have to pay for that liability insurance and that have the heavy garb that, like anything with chain mail or steel, stuff that seriously costs them money. They're of course gonna charge you because every event they do, it adds on to their liability insurance cost.
Okay, Ms. Powell?
Well, I've gone to the run fairs here in town and I've really enjoyed them. And I always kind of felt bad, it was, there was oftentimes so much water there. So I'm glad you're getting out of that and I'm thrilled to see the west side of the White Pine Trail starting to develop and be used because that's gonna be a huge event place for us, I hope. And, um, I think we could get all the details, uh, figured out and, and probably have a great time there.
And with it being, our general time is from twelve to six. When I originally set that in two thousand and fourteen, we had sidewalk sales at the same time. And what we did was we had the sidewalk sales start at ten in the morning. That way I encouraged people to come in town, but, uh, a lot of the businesses, they didn't, didn't wanna come with their, like your at-home businesses, cause they wanted to be in the park with stuff. And, uh, we'd have a walking parade where we'd start from down there to Casey Coens and they'd come all the way down Main Street to Morley Park. Well, in two thousand and seventeen, we didn't do the walking parade. And the one thing that was great when we, the parade was good, but the better thing when we stopped doing the parade was the entertainers that were here in town, they actually went to the, the businesses that were open. So they actually ate at the restaurants versus eating their meal in the park.
Yeah, it was fun.
So with the, you know, with the starting at twelve and people are already in the downtown, it gives them the opportunity to eat at Cedar Cafe, choose classic Kelly's or whatever. And being done at six and they're still in town, they can explore and see what's here as far as like evening restaurants and stuff like that and what stores are open. And then with the motel, for the ones that used to have to come from Plainfield or come from Big Rapids, cause they, you know, there was no motels closer than Greenville. And they would always fill up with other things because other things are happening. And so now we've got one that's closer, so they're just on the other side of the field.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
Well, I'm sure we'll work out the details on it and progress. Uh, no, just that I like reenactments. We had a Civil War reenactment here once, that was really pretty cool. And I go to several a year and more power to you, Perry, I know it's a lot of work.
And, and the, the thing with, if we can get this one off the ground, there's some of them that they want to kickstart in, in bringing in like different Celtic festivals and stuff like that. But they, they've gotta see the value of it versus having, okay, we're gonna start it and it's gonna take us twelve years to grow, you know? If they can see that Cedar is willing to accept, you know, encampment type stuff, like the Civil War stuff, like Celtic stuff, like Viking stuff, whatever, you know, different things from history. Cause with that space on the other side of the White Pine Trail, that is ideal for any form of encampment stuff, the same way with that north side of Cedar Creek. Where there's place for them to put tents without staking into sprinkler systems.
Mr. Frazier?
We had the councils aware of that the pretty good contract meeting for the new fire station yesterday. And it was mentioned that that particular area that I think Mr. Hopkins is talking about may be a staging area for equipment, building the equipment. And I'm gonna refer to Mr. Womack if you think that might be a time factor with his celebration and the equipment, i.e. steel, brick, mortar, sand, being staged in that area while the fire department is being constructed.
It's possible that there will be some staging on the southern end, uh, close to where Maple Street is. They're not going to be all up in the grass field, but yes, you are correct, there might be some staging going on at that point.
Okay.
I, I just.
Right.
Throw this out. Food for salad, I guess.
Right, so we need to make sure that that's separated.
That's one of the details that I'd like to see a map on so that I could work with Mr. Hopkins so we can identify where appropriate places to hold these things might be in light of the fact that there might be some staging amongst other things.
We just have a lot of material for that building.
Sure.
And he, and I'd hate to, I'd hate to, the week before they come in and dump, uh, two hundred thousand tons of steel in that particular spot.
Well, in that case, I would like to be able to just move what we have on the west side of the trail to the north side of the creek.
Again, I think you probably just need to bring a map.
Kind of something better than that, or?
Other than what was on the application?
Another problem that I have with not only Mr. Hopkins' event, but virtually every event that happens in the city is I'll get a first draft and I'll discuss the issues, um, and you know, it, these are living documents.
Right.
But I never seem to get the follow-up map, I never get the follow-up, uh, list of things that are actually gonna happen. Um, and so it becomes a whirlwind and very difficult for me to manage these things uh, when the applicant doesn't provide me the materials. So, um, yeah, I'd be happy for an updated map for what's actually going to be proposed, uh, which helps me identify potential risks and liabilities for the city. Now, I know that the CBDT is considering doing work on the north side of the creek this year as well. Um, they're planning on putting some pathways through there. There's also a lot of, um, wet spots, there's a lot of downed trees and there is residential housing there as well. So my preference, if council's still going to allow an encampment and fires, is if they still use the west side of the White Pine Trail, they would just have to kind of look at some of the staging that would be on the south side of that. There's plenty of room up.
Well, I'd like to wrap this up, go ahead.
I think we're all pretty much in agreement, we would like to see it. I believe that there's room for the determination between Mr. Perry and the city manager. I think a sit-down is due first of the, with next week, depending on the availability of both of them, to iron these things out.
Well, sure, I was, I was just gonna say, Mr. Manager, um, he wants to have this event in May. This is a first reading, June, wants to have this in June, at the Summer Solstice, right, you said the Summer Solstice. He wants to have this in June, so there, we should have time to have him come back to us, come to you and then come back to us with a better map and more detail.
That's all I expect.
So I, I'm assuming we can make that happen in, in April?
Yeah.
March?
Well, I'll know more by then what my budget is.
Okay.
And can we at some point, as far as maps go, let me know what my bare minimum is or maximum is? Cause the map requirement, I used to be able to just draw, I can't do that, I was told, old man, you gotta get with the times.
Not by me.
Yes, by you, at a, at a meeting.
Old man?
Yes, I'm not that much older than him, but that's.
I think you're younger than me.
Yeah.
Can I propose that for some reason, his, his event, you know, where he's wanting to do it at the heart of the city, if there is construction material or if it makes it more difficult for him, if it's easier for us to swap locations pending he is, would, you know, has to do that because he can't build things up there, the chamber would be glad.
Okay.
To, to do whatever, to make it the easiest for everybody.
Ms. Ashison?
Can I propose that, um, there's some sort of time constraint or something here that we forego, we see what's going on, can we have Mike and Perry do, you know, figure this out?
And come back to us in March?
Yeah, well, I plan on coming back, but where my, my tension is right now was I was told it wasn't adequate for that location.
With the map that you had?
I think that, I think that we're all in agreement that we wanna see it. Um, and it needs to be worked out between you two. Um, and I think that we're understanding that, that things can take, things can be worked out.
It's a living document.
Yeah, so I think that we can move on and, um, I don't know what we need to, to do to have this.
So I will propose, uh, Mr. Hopkins, that you meet with the city manager and that this come back to us for a second reading at the March meeting. Is March sufficient for you or do you need April?
No, I should be fine.
Okay.
I won't know for sure because our deadline for people to get their sponsorships and stuff is after that, but I can still tell you what.
Saying you can't make changes, I'm saying, can you bring this back to us after having clarified with the city manager in March?
Yes.
Let's do that.
And I believe for clarification, all Mike's asking for is stuff that we need.
Yeah, locations.
Just, just a little bit, little, little patience for both of you.
I, I just apologize.
We can get this figured out.
Every event I put on requires more detail that is being asked each time.
This is a new location.
Yeah.
That has things that have been added, like underground sprinklers and so on. So we're still working on making that all work. So we need some clarification on exactly what it is that you need and where you're going to be. And then apparently there was some confusion as to who was going to be where and when they were going to be there. So that's, I mean, that's not on us. So you're gonna do that.
Yes.
And it will be wonderful, it'll be fabulous, if you need a speech, let me know. Okay? Awesome, moving on, we had a item. G, on Ms. Powell.
I, um, have talked to Mike several times about Skinner Field and getting an update and a new lease and the finances. And he's told me he's tried to contact, uh, Mr. Kiphart and apparently that's our only contact. And, um, he has not responded, I even saw him, uh, a few days at Myers, a few days back.
That's where we see everybody, I saw you.
And he, he said he got some emails, but he didn't think he needed to respond to them. And I said, well, you know, it's, it's time, we've gotta set this in motion, it's almost football season. And these guys have done a wonderful job, there's no doubt about it, but we.
And they're volunteers.
Right, and we, but we've got the lease and we gotta work it out and we gotta know where the money is.
Mr. Frazier, weren't you part of this committee?
Mr. Frazier wasn't what I was.
Why am I calling you Mr. Frazier, Mr. Gross, weren't you part of this? I'm, I'm, Marty, you're my favorite person.
I want you to understand he has a day older than me, so every time you say that, it insults me, okay?
By twenty-four, because being older, maybe it means you think you're wiser.
And he does come before me in the alphabet, so anyway, that's, sorry, yes, I was. Uh, Mike left me a message, cause I was busy at work.
Mm-hmm.
I've been digging through to try to get an email. I have finally found them, I will get them to Mike where we'll be able to email him. I will email them also.
Okay.
I can address them in a manner that Mike probably won't.
Are you referring to me?
Like get, yeah.
I'm sorry.
He's saying he can be more assertive, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think I can, after having worked with him, I can hit him on the level that we had worked together.
Okay, great.
Part, part of the problem though is I represent the government and they do not respond to me. That's, and if there's a group that just doesn't wanna communicate with me, then what are they doing? Um, I've sent multiple emails, I've, I've asked, uh, Mr. Frazier here for information. I, I would just point out one minor thing and that's, uh, we do not have a lease with these people. Their lease expired in September, I've contacted them, attempted to contact them multiple times. And if they're not interested in working with the city, then they can go somewhere else.
Is Mr. Kiphart still in charge of this, is that your understanding?
He was when I left.
Okay, or someone else become president?
It's when I left and the last of my knowledge was that he was.
Okay.
And ultimately, this is city property, belongs to us, I mean, Skinner Field belongs to us.
I was prepared to have all the locks changed this month because they're not intending to use it, at least not that I'm aware of. Um, and we need to make sure that we're the ones who are in control of our property. So if they can't get to us, they're not going to use our property, period.
Okay, so to follow up, Mr. Gross is going to contact or has some contact information?
I will make sure I contact him if it means going knocking on his door.
All right.
Or on his head, but I didn't say that part.
I, again, I'm not my circus, not my moniker.
If they are not intending to do it.
Although I guess on some level it is.
If they are intending to do it, then we need to find somebody that will.
Yes.
It's making me nervous that nobody's knocking on our door. So.
I believe there was a change in leadership, I'm not sure that it is Sean anymore.
I don't know, we don't know, we do not know.
They might think they have a lease and.
He knows he doesn't.
Okay.
I spoke to him last October at a football game at high school. I told him they were, you were expecting him, we were expecting him in, in September, if not then by October. And they still didn't come in, so, uh, his comment at the time was he thought that because there wasn't gonna be any changes, they didn't need to. That's wrong because it still needs to be renewed, whether there's changes or not, so.
Okay, so then I guess we'll follow up again next month?
Yeah, I sure don't wanna go the nuclear option and lock anybody out, it's a wonderful organization. And we just wanna, we're gonna have to step on, as a council, we're gonna have to step on somebody and say, get in here.
So I guess we'll follow up next month?
And we can continue to follow up in this group all we want, but until they come to the table, we're wasting our time.
Well, I think what I'm saying is we're gonna give Mr. Gross an opportunity to reach out and then.
Not that I'm a part of it anymore.
Right.
As a board member, I will reach out.
But we appreciate that Mr. Gross might have a connection and can reach out. And from there, if we haven't gotten a response, we will move forward as necessary to protect city property.
What I hear you say to make sure that we are clear is, um, by next month, if we have not heard from the Skinner Field friends, then we will assume that they have dissolved, moved on, or are no longer interested in the property and we will take appropriate measures.
I would go farther, if we don't hear from them by the end of this month.
Okay.
And that's what I'm gonna tell them.
Yeah, because in the meantime.
If the city manager hasn't heard from them by the end of this month, you're prepared to go on and try to find somebody else.
I agree.
If.
Sooner the better.
With the pressure.
If he's not in charge anymore, we need to at least get the name of who is.
Well, he had to have turned it over to somebody.
Yeah.
He seems to feel he's still in charge, so.
Okay.
From what I talked to him.
Okay, well, there you go. End of the month.
Thank you, Mr. Gross, for following up on that, even though it's not your job. But thank you for following up on that, even though it's not really, you know, your job anymore.
It is my job because I'm part of the board. And I wanna make sure this is taken care of also.
Sure.
The biggest thing is make sure it's taken care of, the kids and they have a place to play.
Okay, so then we are moving on, any, anything else on that? We are moving on to communications. Community event calendar. Run Michigan. Run Michigan, Stark Fair Fest, yearly calendar.
I did have another community event dropped off at, what, about five fifteen today. Uh, that's for the Life Walk, uh, that will also conflict with what's going on in Morley Park.
Although I believe, didn't Ms. Ashison say she folded in?
They, they worked it in, it's part of them now.
Yeah, but there's some other things.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate. Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to figure it all out so I can present some, some kind of clean stuff to the council.
We appreciate your.
And we appreciate that, at some point, it is their job to figure it out when they're folding them in, but we appreciate your facilitating.
I find that they sure like giving me their problems and expect me to figure it out for them, so. Um, but yes, so, the other issue with that one is that I can approve that one because it's been no problems for many years.
And it's done before, yeah.
Whereas these events are changing and doing other things, so that's why it needs council.
Right, I understand that.
Uh, I would point out the, uh, Dean Ock, Ockman, I, I apologize, I'm totally mispronouncing that, letter that's in there.
Dean Ockman letter?
Uh, he wanted, he called me today, wanted to make sure that council was aware of his letter.
Any other, um, questions, comments on communications? We'll move forward then to department reports, city manager.
Uh, so, it's no secret that the city is going to be reviewing a marijuana ordinance coming up here soon. Um, the city attorney and I are on the last little bit of it. I fully expect to have a large, if not complete, package for this council at the next meeting. Um, it's also my intention to hold another public forum, uh, now that I have, I think, a good estimation of what's going to happen. I'll present that to the public for comment, obviously any industry insiders. Um, so that, uh, they have the information, or at least the starting point of the conversation of the information. Of course, uh, this is all gonna be policy, this is all gonna be council's, uh, baby. And I fully expect that the next meeting will go past nine o'clock.
And to clarify, when we say specifics, we're talking about actual proposed zoning ordinances of what can go where based upon what has been discussed with the attorney.
So.
With members of council individually.
So unless you're a boring policy wonk and, and attorney like me, you're not gonna be super concerned about the majority of the regulatory stuff. But, the stuff that council, I, I suppose is gonna be very interested in is what types of businesses, how many of those businesses, and where we allow them. So, I've done my best to provide the council with as much information as I can over the last many months about that type of stuff. I've had sit-down conversations with, uh, most of you, if not all of you. Um, so this is no surprise to the council, um, but I find, uh, the more I talk to the citizens, they seem to be surprised that this is going on, which shocks me, so.
Yes.
So, we will be having at least one more town hall, is the intent, to actually roll out what the hopeful intended ordinances will be before they are submitted to council for us to vote.
Correct, so that'll be March fifth, probably about five thirty up at the public library. Um, I've also given, um, some advance warning to Judy Reed at the Post. She knows it's coming and she'll probably have it in the twenty-seventh newspaper. Um, I, I don't have all the information for her yet, so she'll get it by the twenty-seventh.
Are you, are you, on March five, this, um, are you expecting the council to be there?
No, so this is a public forum, it's simply my opportunity to provide information to the public. I will hear the, the public comment and try my best to provide the council.
Okay.
With public comment, now, I did have this, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I did have a discussion with the council person today about that issue. Um, first of all, because it's not a city council meeting, you're not expected to be there, you're welcome to attend, uh, but you're not expected to. Um, but also with the two previous public forums, I made the decision not to record them because I wanted to provide anonymity to any person who came. Uh, because I did not want anybody's boss reading or, or, or hearing that and saying, you know, that sounds a lot like my employee. He's talking about a pro marijuana policy, I should fire him. So, uh, we do take transparency very seriously here, as you guys all know. Um, and obviously, anything that we do here in this chamber, including discussing the ordinance and, and whatnot, will be recorded. It will be put on YouTube, uh, it is not my intention to record this public forum meeting.
The, the intention, and the manager and I actually talked about the idea of putting this public forum out there, was to give the community an opportunity to see it when we actually have, this is where and how many and what. At least, it doesn't mean we can't change it when it comes to council, but to give them some really concrete, this is the projected plan so that they could get some input on it before it comes to us.
Does, does the planning commission have to review these ordinances first or it goes straight to us?
No, so, they're not required to. Um, again, council could give it to the planning commission and say, please give us your input. I'm not sure we want to do that. Um, you certainly could, but you're not required to.
I spoke to the mayor about that specifically.
Yes.
And about whether or not that should be a step that we do. And the mayor's position, and I agree with him, is that this is, um, such a large policy that is implementing this state law, that we really need to be where the buck stops.
Yes.
It, it needs to be us. So, and I don't disagree with him. So, that's the, the construct, so we'll try to have this community meeting, we'll get it out there. Uh, the mayor's also asked me to, um, assist the city manager with any public comments regarding with the press or with television, um, as requested. So, I, again, as communications person, I'm happy to do that. But the idea is we're trying to get as much out to the community as we can, to get as much feedback as we can. So, there are no surprises or secrets, or, we're, we're not trying to slip anything in that people are unaware of. Now, with that being said, is it still possible that someone will not know when we go to vote on this? I'm sure that's possible, but we have been talking about it quite lengthy and.
We've had public forums.
Yeah, this will be the third public forum we will have held. And this one will be different only in that it will have more specifics as we drill into what we hope it to actually look like as a policy.
The surprising part deserves very few people from Cedar Springs City there.
Yeah, it's been very interesting, the people who've had the most opposition, who've come and spoke to me and asked to have meetings with me, don't actually live here. And, and there, I, I probably feel like I need to clarify that for you two. Um, just to clarify, if you don't live here, we don't represent you. Like, our job is to represent the people who live here. And to make sure that this ordinance protects your property values, provides you with services and access to things that are legally accessible by law, um, protects the security of your home. This is all a part of what we are trying to manage, but it doesn't really relate if you live in Sand Lake or Solon Township, or Nelson Township, or, as I've had several people tell me. And I have to say, I, actually, one person has said, so you're telling me if I live in Sand Lake, that my opinion doesn't matter as much? And I'm like, yes, that is what I'm telling you. So, because my job is to, our council's job is to represent the residents of the city. So, that is what we are intending to do and that is where we will be holding city town halls and the input we will be looking for. So, any other thoughts on that as we move forward? And it will be, I imagine this will be a, um, eventful meeting at the next one.
I suggest we just move forward.
Yeah, I'm good.
Not, not with that, but with the rest of the.
I agree, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, again, in the spirit of transparency. So, that was the manager's report, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Department of Public Works. Thank you for the snow removal, I hear you out, hear you out there at stupid dark thirty. Plowing the snow out so I can get out of my driveway, so thank you for that. And Police Department. Nothing Sergeant Probst, all right. Fire Department.
Mr. Gross has nothing.
I am just not gonna live this down.
Jerry called me Mrs. Hopkins for a long time.
I could, I could say, that is true, and then I don't know how long Jerry called Mr. Hopkins, Mr. Perry. Or I think Mrs. Perry was my particular. But, you know, you do both have the same haircut and the same mustache.
Mine's parted, just a little bit different.
Is it? Okay, so.
I agree, I agree.
Their mustaches are different, just look at their mustaches.
So, so, anyway, anything new for the fire station that you want to tell us about? Obviously, we're looking at a staging area and.
Pre, pre-bid meeting, um, yesterday, um, well-attended. I'm not sure how many were contractors, how many were subcontractors and sub-subcontractors, but it was well-represented, uh, this room was full, I think I counted twenty-two. Um, plus the staff and, uh, HRC. Mid-opening is the twenty-seventh at two o'clock.
Okay.
The bid opening is now pushed back two weeks.
Pushed back another week, it'll be three weeks.
Two weeks.
You didn't get the memorandum?
Sorry, that happened this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to tell anybody.
Anyhow, um, looking forward to possibly, possibly scratching some grass in March, April. With a tentative ribbon cutting, April of twenty-twenty-one.
Wonderful. Very exciting.
And a possible retirement in April of twenty-twenty-one.
No way.
You live next door, what's the point of retiring?
About five minutes after them scissors go clear.
Okay.
We're gonna build you a zip line so you can just go your back.
That's right, that's what I think.
And the interest of time factor, I told the guy, don't be surprised if that engine's setting on the apron running when you hit her.
All right, anything else on the Fire Department? All right, moving on to City Clerk.
I just have a couple things, um, we're busy preparing for the March primary. So, our office is very busy at the moment. We also did receive news, news today as well that we will be having a May election for the, um, school bond. So, we will have a March, May, August, and November election.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay.
Lastly, just wanted to let you guys know that my husband and I are expecting our first child.
Woo, congratulations!
The fave is growing.
We have to have a baby shower.
Aw, that's awesome.
So, that's wonderful, and then, let's see, Finance Director.
Sorry.
No?
I just have a few things to add, um, a huge plug for North Kent Community Enrichment, I am on the board, as you stated earlier tonight.
And thank you for that.
We had our annual daddy-daughter dance last Saturday, huge, huge event, um, very well-attended, sold out again.
I saw the pictures of the marshmallow fight.
Yes, that was so much fun, the, the kids and dads both really enjoyed it, so, um, we'll definitely, hopefully, continue that event. Um, just wanted to mention, we have so many events going on right now, I'll just zip through them quickly. Um, check our website or Facebook page, North Kent Community Enrichment, for further details. Broadway Boot Camp, seventh and eighth grade baseball, seventh and eighth grade softball, third and fourth grade youth volleyball, fifth and sixth grade volleyball, Learn to Sew for Adults, Learn to Sew for Fourth through Eighth Graders, Taekwondo, Babysitting Clinics, Yoga, Zumba, We Hawks Basketball, Coed Adult Volleyball, Ukulele Lessons for Sixth Graders, Open Men's Basketball on Sunday, Monday, and Thursday nights, Winter Pole Vaulting, Girls Rocket Travel Basketball, Hawks Hoops, which is second through fourth grade basketball. And lastly, our newest event will be next weekend, February twenty-second. Um, Freezen for a Reason, I hope you've heard about it. Please, um, even if you don't plan to jump, come out and support the event. Um, ever, you need to be at least fourteen years old to jump in the lake, um, for liability reasons.
Probably slightly insane.
Registration starts at ten AM, it's at Pine Lake, um, and the jumps start at noon. So, hopefully, this will be our first annual and we can continue to grow it from here.
And people can sponsor how, where?
Yes, yep, you can sponsor jumpers.
Where would you do that?
On the website, go to the website or Facebook page.
Okay.
For further details, yep.
Here you can slide thirty dollars to the Finance Director too.
Okay.
Are you jumping?
I am not jumping, no, I am sorry.
You'll get over it.
I will be inside the warm building taking registrations.
No, I have jumped for Special Olympics quite a few times this year.
And it's, and it's all to raise money for North Kent Community Enrichment to continue to provide all these wonderful programs at reasonable prices for people. Um, oh, and I forgot to mention, um, swim lessons at Kent City for all ages, um, very well-attended as well.
Excellent.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you, code enforcement.
She's doing a good job, it's a hard job, but, uh, cleaning the city up a little bit by a little bit.
Building inspection.
I wonder if we should take that off the agenda, because we don't really.
We don't do that.
I don't really bring reports to you on that.
Used to be more internal, when it was Stash.
Stash, okay. I wonder if I need, that sounds like a dot, I need to.
That was his name, I can't, before we outsourced it, do I, am I, do I lie?
Stan Stash?
No, he was still alive even just a few years ago. Jerry, because I talked with him when we put the addition on our house, like, a lot.
Stan?
I'm sure it's Stash.
Is it Stan Stash? Oh, my gosh.
I'll ask, I will ask the mayor, but I'm relatively confident. Oh, well, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, he's trying to stick up for him. Oh, what was I gonna say, he wasn't that old.
Irregardless, it's time to move on.
Um, can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
Like, can we maybe get, like, a, if things are, um, now I've, now the word left my mouth, but if there's a building that's run down, that's.
So, we, we did institute the abandoned building ordinance.
Okay.
We could give council a list of which buildings are on that, if you could like.
And, um, ones that are non-livable.
Maybe include it in, let me see if I, I feel like I'm capturing what you're asking for. Maybe include it in the, um, consent agenda?
Yeah, something.
Other than communications.
Yeah.
Communications.
Good.
Yes?
Yes, please.
We good on that? Okay, Boards and Commission Minutes? Nothing? We good? No questions?
Um, I just, oh, this isn't where we're speaking yet, is it?
Nope, any questions on Boards and Commission Minutes?
No.
Okay, and, because there's Library Board, we heard from Donna. Um, and then we'll move on to Council Comments. And we will start with Mr. Gross.
He wants to get out of here.
We, we again tonight on occasion got sidetracked with things and tried to discover and, and correct things that just probably should have been passed on to the city manager and the person involved to begin with, but, uh, uh, I still think there's some dialogue and discussion that's necessary. Uh, we just need to keep in mind that sometimes we can drag things out too far. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Race.
I agree, um, I think being new to a council, you know, I think that there are, um, events that happen every year and sometimes it's like this is what it is and I don't know what this event is about, I think the detail is important. Um, every year, our city is changing, things are coming into play, and there's more people that want to do things in the city. You just can't assume, so you just need to make sure that, um, you're doing your due de, due de, that word.
Due diligence.
Thank you, to make sure that you're following policies. Um, the, uh, daddy-daughter dance was amazing. My husband and my daughter went, and my daughter won one of the teddy bears and she was so excited because she needs another one. Um, but it was very awesome and she couldn't stop talking about the marshmallow fight, so it was really cool. Very good, um, congratulations to Ms. Rebecca and her husband, and, um, thank you for all the hard work. City manager, as well.
Ms. Nixon?
Uh, just, congratulations to Ms. Johnson, how exciting, that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Powell?
As usual, it's a pleasure to see y'all and, uh, it's a great council.
As usual, it's a pleasure to see y'all and, uh, it's a great council and a great group of people we work with, and I enjoy it every month. Thank you. You too, Mike.
He wants to cry.
Ms. Ashton?
Um, I want to start off by saying thank you, Mike, for what you do and the, the, um, things that are happening every year. Like you said, if there aren't changes, you're able to, um, able to take care of those things for us, and we appreciate that. It, I know it's hard when, um, people don't follow your, what you need. And you, and you are actually asking for that stuff for us too. So they need to understand that just pressuring it to come to the council's not gonna make it any easier. We still throw it back to you. So I understand your frustration because, you know, calm down and just talk to us and just get to us what we need. And when we do have a new place, the, um, heart of Cedar Springs, that's a new thing. We have to under, he has to understand that we have to, are we gonna allow fires? Are we gonna allow camping? Are we gonna allow this? So that's just frustration that, you know, I understand that, you know, and don't ever think that we're gonna, we're taking that away from you because we're not. We understand what you have to ask for, and we understand that you have to ask for it. So please understand that we do know that, and we do know that you're doing a good job. And congratulations. And also thank you, everybody, because I love the fact that we have people that make our life easier. That's it.
All right. Uh, woo-hoo, a new baby. I think that there should be cake, because there should always be cake.
Red cake.
And thank you for all the additional work that you all do outside of your jobs, like sitting on boards and helping to build buildings and say, and getting up at stupid dark thirty to pass snow. I know it's part of your job, but thank you for that. And thank you for trying to coordinate our exploding community that is having all of these wonderful events happening in all of these new places, in these new buildings, that we don't quite have, people don't have all of it put together on how it needs to work. And I appreciate everybody working together to make that happen. And Mike, I know it's frustrating, and I appreciate what you're doing to make it happen. So thank you for that. And I would also like to say, because a lot of people haven't seen it, thank you for all the work you have put in on this marijuana policy to do really, really deep due diligence, to make this a possible thing for our community that can be safe, effective, um, good for business, good for people coming in, and protect our community at the same time. And we haven't really said to you, thank you for all that work, but thank you for that. And with that, we're adjourned. Boom. I'm sorry, there's some Tylenol in my pocket, do you want it?
Well, I took that already, it's the fact that I think, here.
Is it sinus?
Yeah. Um, and nothing is, nothing.
I have a really good ENT. Post four sinus. And I've hit four. I've hit four.
I have a CT scan, but not tomorrow.
Um, and I've had really good lock, I have an algorithm, I can share it with you.
Some ways he's like working with.
Helped me develop.